We should really sit in order of color next, like color coordinated.
If Sarah were here, she would move us around right now.
Right?
Called our the May 30th regular meeting of the Mounds School Board. Good evening and welcome. First order of business, adoption of the agenda. Entertained a motion?
So moved. Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Bring down all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We moved item 2.1, student representative reports. We've got at least one. We've got two. All right. Welcome. Love you to introduce yourselves and looking forward to your update. Have you negotiated who's gonna go first?
Yeah.
Perfect.
So everybody had a great Memorial Day weekend. Again, my name is Alton and I'm excited to deliver this month and the final student rep report from Mounds View. So I just want to have some like few updates here. Spring sports are coming to an end at Mounds View and here are just a few highlights. Girls and boys track competed at conference last Thursday with both teams placing second. And I also want to commend boys vibe of having a very successful season and they're currently placing, I think, second in their conference. Boys baseball and girls lacrosse are both competing in section tournaments tomorrow and we hope that they do very well. And I also want to comment on boys tennis who placed second in the section finals and I want to congratulate boys ultimate for winning their conference championships. And we also had prom during the second week of May at the Mall of America. Our theme was a secret garden. And I would say it was a pretty fun time. There was free food, so that was good. For student council, we had our elections take place. We voted for our student council presidents for the upcoming school year. And the student body voted for their respective class officers and we can't wait for what's in store next year. And lastly, I want to inform some events we had for this month. Our NHS held their mental health walk on 21st. The walk's purpose was for mental health awareness for ourselves and others. We had opportunities to open up and share about mental health. There were also booths and of course food. And it was great seeing many of our peers and staff supporting it. And then lastly, we had our cultural festival on the 25th. It was organized by our diversity council. It was a fun event where a lot of students and community members shared their cultures. There were also again, performances, discussions, food. It was a great time. And it was all free. So that's all I have for today. It has been a pleasure to, it is a pleasure and an honor to represent Mounds View. And I look forward for the next school year. And I wish everybody a great summer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I am Anna Priscilla from Irondale High School and we have our student council elections. And me and my friend Zoe Tenenbaum are the new co-presidents for the student council.
Congratulations.
Thank you. This past month, our heart club had a mental health walk, some of the Mounds View. And it was really fun. We had lots of people show up and we had little trivia and raffles, lots of prizes given away. Lots of, you know, participation there and that was really cool to see. This coming up, we're having, student council is collabing with GSA and we're doing like a pride spirit week. And Heart Club is also partnering with GSA to do like donut sales in the morning to just have fun. Same with our sports are all coming to an end. You know, we had a really fun season. I'm on the ultimate frisbee team. And three of our players got nominated for all conference winners. So that was really fun. I think that's all I have. So thanks for your time.
Great. Thank you very much. Great updates. Lots happening. Enjoy the rest of the school year.
Thank you.
And your summer.
And your summer.
Let's not get ahead of ourselves. There's one more meeting left.
Yeah, we won't be here.
It's fair. Moving on to item 2.2 announcements, I'll ask Shawna to acknowledge the gifts.
All right. Thank you, Jonathan. There were nine gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $4,710. And there were 16 gifts received for the Ralph Ritter Food Shop this period for a total of $33,882.10. It's recommended that the board accept the gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Thanks Shawna. Thanks to everybody for their incredible generosity to our community. Additional announcements, upcoming meeting date is June 15th. There's a work session of the board at 5:00 PM. And June 20th, a regular meeting of the board at 7:00 PM that the student representatives will not be at apparently, according to Diane. We'll look forward to seeing everybody else here. Item 2.3 superintendent's report.
Thank you, Jonathan. Tonight's is going to be a little bit longer because each spring, the state of Minnesota asks that all school districts participate in Q Comp, provide an update on their program. So tonight I am going to do that as part of the superintendent's report. Most of you, I think, as board members know that Mounds View was one of the first three school districts in the state who joined Q Comp and started working in that program. I'm very comfortable saying over the course of that time, it really has been a very successful program for our school district. As part of the program, there are five components that each year we actually talk through and want to make sure that I highlight and report on this evening. The first of those is the career advancement options. Sometimes you'll hear districts talk about those as career ladder positions for teachers. Examples here in Mounds View of those types of positions include our building instructional leadership team positions. Again, with our acronyms, BUILT positions is what you'll hear people call those. We have instructional strategies facilitators or ISFs. Those also are part of those career ladder. And some of the content area specialists or CAS position also can be part of that group. In total, we have approximately 119 people in these positions across the district. That's roughly about 14% of our, of our teaching staff. The work that those teacher leaders do really is an essential part of our PLC based system. The support that they provide has helped us improve both our performance, student achievement, district wide. So it definitely has been a very positive part of our school culture. A second component that I want to highlight is the job embedded professional development that happens at all of our schools. Really a key message here, I think, is that the professional development associated with the Q Comp program really is focused on in district development opportunities. Our teachers often do professional development that is designed and developed by our teacher leaders and intended for their colleagues, other teachers in the district. Now that doesn't mean that nobody goes out to a conference or to engage in professional development outside. Certainly some of that happens. It's just with the Q Comp program, the primary focus is in district job embedded professional development. So one example of that is the growth and development opportunities that are embedded as part of our teacher development and appraisal process, another acronym, TDAP. You will hear people talk about. They do that as part of their PLCs and teachers have the opportunity to learn from one another on how to best use the high yield instructional strategies in their classrooms and share those strategies with their colleagues. Micro teaching, that's another technique that our teachers use to learn and grow. For anybody in the public not familiar with micro teaching, really it's at its core, a digitally recorded lesson. So instructors are recorded while they're instructing and then their peers in the PLC get to review that. Look at how things were done, learn from their colleagues and then take those strategies and go back and implement them in their own classrooms. I've really been very impressed at how effectively that has been used across the district. Really allows us to focus on best practice strategies, share those in a way that's digitally recorded. So people can continue to talk about, learn and grow without having to be out of the classroom, hire a sub to cover theirs while they're in another classroom observing. So I do want to commend our teachers for their commitment to that ongoing development. Third component of Q Comp is our teacher evaluation process. Now that's embedded as part of our TDAP process here in, in Mounds View. Appraisal here takes place both at a team level as well as for individuals who are part of PLCs and make up those teams. The benefit we've really seen with that approach is that teachers are appraised to the work that's directly impacted to what they're doing in the classroom. So both individually and collectively in their teams, that performance appraisal comes back based on their interaction, instructional strategies and what they're doing in their classrooms with students and to increase student achievement. The PLC then work is not seen as something that's separate from, or the evaluation system being separate from or different than the work they do every single day. It's connected and integral to the work that our teachers do on a daily basis. Fourth component is our alternative pay system. So the Q Comp system includes alternative pay in the form of stipends for our teacher leaders. Specifically those career ladder positions I mentioned earlier, built team members, ISF, CAS positions. Other components of the alternative pay system are included as part of the more comprehensive salary schedule here in Mounds View. And the final component we want to report on and do so annually is the general overview of the program in terms of people meeting the goals. This year we had 98% of our staff who were able to receive their full alternative pay compensation as part of this program. For our probationary staff, that was actually 94% who we received full compensation. So, so good numbers this year with people being able to achieve those goals. I think that's important because when the system was set up and the way it's set up, every teacher has the opportunity to earn that compensation, but isn't necessarily guaranteed. Isn't that everybody will definitely get it every year. So that is something we'll continue to watch as we go forward. But I do, the percentages I think do reflect, you know, that we've continued to maintain that high level of accountability and expectation. So providing support so the teachers can get there, but not just making sure, giving it to everybody without that accountability built into the system. So overall, I want the public to know and certainly the board as well, that Q Comp continues to be a very successful program for the district. I think the way the program has been embedded into the work we do here in Mounds View, very complimentary to our overall goals. And we certainly hope the state will continue to support this program now and well into the future. With that, I'll end my report.
I might pause for any questions that folks have.
Sure.
Important, statistically required report.
Yep.
A lot of information. Any questions for Chris on Q Comp?
It's good stuff.
Good report. All right. Excellent. Move this item 3.0 approval of the consent agenda. Entertained a motion to approve.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We've studied 4.1, 2023-24 Community Service Capital Outlay Debt Service Nutrition Services Budget. And welcome Executive Director Humnek. Good evening.
Good evening. This evening, we're gonna have, we're gonna cover a report only of the following. The 2324 projected budget for nutrition services, community service, capital and debt service funds. These will be included as part of the final budget document that will be presented to the school board for approval at the June 20th, 2023 school board meeting. We are in the process of reviewing some of the legislative decisions and unpacking some of those. So that's information that will still be in process and some of the rules define. And some of that information, we'll look for further guidance from MDE and statute. And that, some of these will actually be handled during the revised budget process because like when we start with nutrition services, that was a change. It was universal and free meals were, was passed. However, there's not clarification on how the state will provide the state revenue at this time. That will have to be set up through a different payment option because they'll reimburse us with the federal funds, the USDA National School Lunch Program, but the other component has not been defined yet. It's still in process. But currently we have the budget set for total revenue at 6.5 million and expenses at 6.5 million. So there will be changes to the meal counts and changes to the revenue and expenditures as we learn more details about how many students will be served and how that revenue stream will come in through those legislative decisions.
So what's the timeline on us getting those details? Because I guess I'm a little concerned with passing this today with so little detail.
I think everyone's unpacking those details. There are, some of these items will come up with different coding, with different instructions, different sources than how the revenue will come and stream through to us. So what we'll do is if, if the school board approves it, we would approve these on June 20th unless we hear more information. We watch it daily. There's, we're looking for two large components with nutrition. Number one is how will they reimburse us for the state portion of that, the universal meals? And the second point is clarification, if it will also apply to pre-K.
I, I think it's a good question. So report today. Lots of moving parts. Jim's gonna give us an update later. The ink is barely dried on our state budget. And I, I think we don't have full clarity into what that all means for us.
Thank you for clarifying that. But I, I guess I'm looking at, you know, usually whenever I look at budget documents, I'm always comparing current year to, you know, just, you look for similarities and if something's really different, you're like, huh, what's going on there? And I just see a lot of pretty significant variations in our expected revenues. And so is that just because you, you are confident of that already? Or, I, I mean, I guess that's where I'm just a little.
There's, nutrition's had a lot of changes. So in the past, for a while, we were in a situation where it was free for all. And we were reimbursed at the federal level, which is a higher rate of pay for those meal reimbursements. Now with the universal free meals being passed, it'll be a combination of federal and state. The state component of that has not been identified yet. So we're working, looking for clarification. And I participated in a lot of the sessions where they're trying to unravel this. And there's not clarity on timelines and how it's going to be set up or there's not a lot being unpackaged at this time.
There, there is though in the state, a chunk of money to pay for this. There is in the budget. The problem is, is we just don't know in the details and the timelines. There's about four or five examples of this from the legislative session this year where they passed some things and we don't exactly, the money's there, but we don't exactly know how it's going to work. And that's going to be real challenging for us to manage through some of these things.
We have a June 15th tentative work session, so we should be able to have you have a bit more clarity too, as we know more in two weeks. Every day you learn something new, so.
That, that's what I, I guess that's what I'm yearning for is I want to make sure we have time as a board to.
Yep. Dig through that.
Yeah.
Work session.
Because right now, I'm like, it doesn't look good. Like I wouldn't, you know, it's very, it's, it's unlike any budget we've ever been asked to, you know.
It's a challenging time because legislative decisions were made and you were given the overall cost. But the details have not been released.
Right.
And even with some of the presentations they're providing, there's not timelines listed in that as points of clarification yet.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
But thank you. Great question. So, and the next one is the community service fund and I can provide more details on, on the changes that are flowing through. But again, some of these changes have not been incorporated because we're waiting for further clarification on some of those changes. Changes for the 2000, from the 2022, 23 fiscal year, several key components were introduced this session that focus on early childhood and the commitments to students receiving a world-class education. Expanding access to pre-kindergarten and making sure the youngest learners, families and guardians have the resources needed to succeed. The 2023 session included a variety of changes to the community service fund. Increases the community education revenue from 542 per capita to 635 per capita. And FY '25 and later makes 4,000 expiring seats permanent beginning in 2024. Increases developmental screening aid per child to $98 at age three, 65 for age four and 52 at age five and six. And 39 screened within 30 days after first enrolling in a public school kindergarten. The ECFE formula, early childhood family education formula increase is tied to the general education formula. So it naturally will follow. Increases in adult education, basic education contact hour cap to $30 per contact hour, up from the current $22 per contact hour. The proposed budget has total revenue at 6.8 million and has expenditures at 7.3. And the majority of the change is really due to a reduction of the food shelf fund balance. So you can see the food, the food shelf revenue is projected to be at 790,000, which is a significant, it went up, but however, the expenses are at 1.3 million. And so that's where the change is and the fund balance changed there.
So it's spending down some of there.
Correct.
Can you speak to, there's about a $2 million delta from last year to this year on the community education fund budget revenue in the details, third line down?
The federal aid.
Federal aid.
So that's all federal aid?
Correct, correct. Because we had ESTER and we had COVID resources as well. And, and we'll also have another ESTER III will have a remaining balance, but that will go into the revised budget. So the original budget stays very consistent.
Great.
Any questions about the community education budget? The next component is made up, there's a slight change in the next component, which is normally capital.
Wait.
Yeah.
Sorry. I have a question. Moving a little slow. Just a question and I, I don't know if we've covered this, but on the Laurentian, the revenue, the, the difference there, I was, I was interested to see that we had actually revenue in, at Laurentian for 2223? Because I didn't think we were doing any programs there.
That was the amended budget, not knowing whether that would be operational or not.
So that is going to be zero when we finalize the budget, when we finalize.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. All right.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Thank you. Great question. And there are still some operational costs that have to continue to be paid, property liability in those items.
Yep.
So the next component is reserved for, and this is a reserve pot of money for health and safety. So health and safety and LTFM are made up of levy and aid. And it's made up of physical hazards, other hazardous materials, environmental health and safety, asbestos removal and fire safety and accessibility make up health and safety of the budget. The next component is the LTFM deferred maintenance components, which are made up of building envelope, building hardware, electrical, interior surfaces, mechanical systems, plumbing, professional services, roof systems, site projects. And you can see there is a slight change in the fund balance and we're working through those details on the fund balance. Health and safety is a component where you put your estimates in at the end of the year, you'll report your actuals. And then you'll get a levy adjustment the following year for the difference. So you'll see some of that change in there. Any questions on the LTFM? The next component is reserve funds for leases. This is actually a general accounting standards board change. And you'll see that there will be UFARs, which is the MDE reporting tool for finance, has made some changes to this requiring us to put it into a separate finance code. And so these are the lease levies that are addressed during your lease levy, during your levy process. And the last component is the general fund reserve for operating capital. You have a combination of levy and aid. And the expenditures are made up of technology equipment, facilities, other equipment, special services, site allocation and instructional support textbooks and curriculum related. Any questions on the capital? The debt service is made up of principal and interest times 100% plus 5% to account for the debt. To give some leeway in case some of the taxes are not collected. And so you can see the, the total, the local property taxes and the expenditure expenditures for principal and interest. And it's divided into two pods. It's normal debt for a general obligation debt, but there's also other post-employment debt. And so you'll see those changes indicated in the debt service summary. Any question?
Another question. This is just more about like a formatting and how we see this, but it would be helpful as we look at, you know, year to year. We have a percentage of budget for, for the, you know, the, the year forward, but it would also be helpful if we could see a percentage of budget for the current year.
Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh.
Thank you.
Great, great update.
Thank you.
Lots of work into that budget. Move down to 4.2, 2023-24 Enrollment Class Size Update.
We continue to monitor the 2324 enrollment. It, it looks great. There's two areas that we continue to monitor specifically is second grade at Island Lake and kindergarten at SLECK. We will routinely review this information to monitor and review this. These are great numbers, and we're very excited to see, our original was 11,270, actual as of 523 is 11,352. Of course, there are some changes we continue to monitor over the summer.
One thing I'd, I'd point out for the board, I'll mention it actually when we do the DOP update, but part of Hazel's, Hazel Reinhardt, when we did our enrollment, remember she, she targeted 800 students for our incoming kindergarten class, and you'll note that as of that May 23 date, 834. So we're targeting 800, we're at 834, we're right where she said we ought to be focused to maintain that slow, steady growth and have that cohort survival. Again, it sounds a little morbid, but kids as they come through, moving from grade to grade to grade, she said that's, that's a great target for you. So we're going to be watching that one closely as, as we move forward, but it's a, it's a good indication that those numbers are strong.
Great.
Where we want.
One question I have on this was, as you look at kind of the site by site.
Yep.
And there seems to be a really big difference in the first grade level in Valentine Hills as far as projections compared to actuals that don't reflect with the other sites, and it's pretty significant. So I was just wondering if there's, like, did we do something different with, like, you know?
We'd have to look and, and just the kindergarten cohort too. I'd have, even the current kindergarteners going into first grade.
Right.
We'd have to, we can go back and take a look at that one. I'll flag that one too as well to take a look.
Bernice, can I just ask you a quick question? You had said there was two areas, you said second grade at Island Lake, and what was the second one?
Snail Lake.
Snail, okay, thank you.
And we're monitoring both of those very closely because we're watching the school board approved parameters, and so we're monitoring both of those areas closely.
I just didn't catch Snail Lake, so thank you.
That's great. Great question.
And we'll likely build in some flexibility for you and your team over the summer.
You guys have been on a great job. I mean, I really do appreciate that in terms of the ability as we watch enrollment, when we need to.
Hot spots.
We're able to address that, and that happens a little differently elementary to secondary. So for the public, at an elementary, it's usually a classroom. You're adding a section at a grade level. At, at a secondary, it could be a, just one course. So an English class, one of the periods of the day, or a science class, or math. So sometimes it's just a class that they need as opposed to a full classroom or a, but we always watch those closely to see where they're at, and again, kind of those hotspots to make sure that if there's opportunity and need, we can address those, so that's appreciated.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions? Thank you, Bernice.
Thanks for the information.
Appreciate the work. Move down to 5.1, 2022, 23 district operational plan. Superintendent Lennox?
Yeah, thank you. At our last work session, we had a chance to go through this in, in great detail, but tonight, I think for the public, we wanted to make sure we provided an update. Every year, we set up our district operational plan and, and set goals. In this past year, we had six goals that we, that we identified two of them as priority goals. Now, throughout the, the course of this school year, on a fairly regular basis, we had the opportunity to update the board and community on our progress that we were making. And like I said, at the last work session, spent considerable time working through all of these in, in great detail. Tonight, we're not going to go back through and do all of that again, but we thought it would be important to make sure that we provide a highlight to each of these goals so people have a sense of, of the work that was done, at least on a high level, for, for all of the, the focus goals that we had for this year. So I will walk through these. The first goal that we had was to enhance communication about our schools. That work really focused in three areas. If you remember, there were the 360-degree virtual tours. Colin worked with a company to make sure that we were able to provide those for each of our sites and capture those important common areas in our buildings. Those all have been designed, developed, and are now live and active on building websites, so people are looking for those. A second area was the promotion of the district Did You Know campaign. That campaign continues to provide interesting and informative information about our schools and programs, intended to highlight some of the great things that are happening that sometimes people either don't know or maybe just have taken for granted, and like, oh yeah, that's right, that's, that's something that's important that we do. So making sure we're pushing that information out about the good things happening in our schools. And finally, this goal included a focus on a kindness campaign for which videos have been and continue to be created around just extraordinary acts of kindness that happen within our schools and in the community. So Colin and the communications team continue to work on that, and you can look forward to seeing more of that as well in the future. A second goal was to expand college and career programming and add career centers at both of our high schools, and I'm happy to let the public know that we do now have dedicated spaces at each of our high schools for our career and college centers. Coordinators were also hired. Fritz Rock is the coordinator at Irondale and Madison Hendrickson at Moundsview. Board had the opportunity to meet them recently as they came and presented on this goal publicly. Students have also been taking advantage of the opportunity to meet with those coordinators in individual meetings, talking about their future careers, colleges, and getting more information. Schools also have been offering opportunities to parents to access the career and college spaces and see the resources. They do that a lot at communication nights or at other scheduled events. Our coordinators have also created a calendar of events that includes information about when upcoming college visits will be happening, and also opportunities if students are interested in participating in career field trips. All of that information is available and included in the new career and college websites that were designed for each of the high schools. A highlight of this work really took place, the fall edition of School Talk was very well received, included a cover story about the work in this area. And I must say, we were really very fortunate to have a couple pretty important visits to our, our schools. The first took place this fall and included Dean Commissioner Steve Grove, MDA Deputy Commissioner Stephanie Barrage, and Department of Labor and Industry Commissioner Nicole Blissinbach. The second just happened this spring, when we had the opportunity to host the new Minnesota Department of Ed Commissioner Willie Jett. Both of those visits allowed us to showcase our work. They all got to talk to students, staff, some of our board members about the work that we're doing in this area. So just very proud of the work that's been done there. That will be ongoing work for us as we move into the future. A third goal was expanding access to community education programs, and specifically in the areas of early childhood, youth programming, and adult programming. So in the area of early childhood, the district added actually a number of pre-K classes this year, including some classes that are of shorter duration, and the reason they did that was directly related to parent feedback that they had solicited. So I think that's meeting a need. School space has also been converted to accommodate additional room for programming for our student and parent classes. The Early Childhood Parent Advisory Group also has been planning a number of outreach and engagement events. Some great things have happened throughout this school year and will continue as well into the future. This summer, more than 10 new early childhood classes are going to be offered for students and their families across the district, so we're looking forward to that expanded programming continuing yet this summer. In the area of youth programming, before and after-school programs are now being offered and functioning at kindergarten, elementary, and middle school sites. All of our sites have that programming. Multiple new vendors actually have been added as well, so they've been able to expand our program opportunities for our students across all program levels. Intermedial sports have returned across our middle schools. That obviously went away during the pandemic. We hadn't had a chance, but that's all back, and students are able to participate in those. The district also hosted a community expo, highlighting both district and community programs that are available to our families. And a number of additional programs are coming this summer. When Carl was here giving the update, I know he highlighted some of the new sports camps, and also something that we're very proud to see going is Summer Welding Lab. So we're getting more of that career stuff and including it right in and through the, through the summer. For our adult learners, Metro East Career Pathways actually was awarded a grant to offer some online content for Microsoft Office Specialist and the Paraprofessional Certification Curriculum. So that has been added. The district partnered with American Transportation to provide access to a Class B commercial bus driver's licensure program. That was obviously selfish of us because we're looking for bus drivers, so a partnership that allows people to earn that license was beneficial to them and to the school district. We also partnered with St. Paul College to offer a certified nursing assistant program. We continue to offer technology, career pathways, GED, and ELL courses. That will continue through the summer into next year, and the campus at Silverview is actually expanding as a Pearson testing center that we can, so that we can continue to serve more people moving forward. A fourth goal was to update our district health, safety, and security plans. By far our largest goal, we, we identified that moving into the year, but I am happy to report that all of our district crisis manuals have been updated. District-wide record-keeping tool is now in place that allows us to monitor and provide real-time access to all of the required safety drills that are done across our sites. A text and email notification system has also been implemented that alerts district staff whenever a 911 call is made from any of our school sites, so we know something's happening and can immediately connect with them. Additional security cameras were added at various points across the district to increase safety and security in our buildings and programs. District staff participated in a number of trainings that were facilitated by intermediate district 916, but really tied back to the work of the I Love You Guys Foundation. That's been important work for us and is really guiding our, our next steps moving forward. We also are working then, because of that, with local law enforcement about next steps and setting expectations around using the updated language coming from the I Love You Guys Foundation and the protocols that we will be implementing in our schools and programs across the district. We also placed a priority on addressing cybersecurity. That obviously will continue as we move forward. It seems like every day, they learn something new, and improvements are being made in that area all the time as they become available. District Security Subcommittee exists and continues to meet regularly. They're evaluating our progress, addressing new information, and assessing areas where they think we can see some improvement. And we are recommending that this goal remain a priority goal moving forward in next year. We've done a lot, but there's always more to do, and so this is one that you'll see as a recommendation as part of our DOP goal, goals for next year. Our fifth goal was to review and expand our instructional coaching model. The curriculum instruction team really took the lead on that goal. We are in partnership with the Center for Educational Leadership out of the University of Washington. Professional development was scheduled and provided in five distinct cycles to our district staff, our principals, and building-level instructional leaders. The feedback from those individuals has been extremely positive. They are very excited about moving to a coaching model that's going to provide our educators with necessary skills and knowledge, and we also believe will improve student achievement. Video has been created to be used at sites next year to support the implementation of coaching structures, and summer work will certainly include setting up for that support, and the support of our new staff will be entering the roles of instructional coaches. And finally, we had our sixth goal, which was to complete a comprehensive housing and enrollment study. I mentioned that just a little bit earlier. That work really occurred earlier this school year, but we had the opportunity to partner with Hazel Reinhardt, who was the former state demographer. Hazel knows our district very well and has done these projections for us in the past. Her report really concluded that while all districts across the state experienced disruptions during COVID, and we were no exception, our district really has managed that well and is returning to slow, steady growth over the next several years. We are continuing to monitor our kindergarten numbers. I pointed that out in the enrollment report Bernice provided. We're targeting that 800 number, and are very, that's looking very positive for us as we move forward, and hoping to get back to that stable and predictable numbers that we're so used to seeing. Currently, the only wild card, as Hazel phrased it in her report, was the future development of Rice Creek Common, so we'll continue to monitor that as that moves forward, updating the board and watching this data as we move forward. In the meantime, it is our recommendation, and has been, that the district remain closed to non-resident enrollment yet into the foreseeable future, so no change in that regard. So in conclusion, happy to report that we were able to meet all of our six goals this year. Also want to recognize for the public that this is really a team effort. There are a lot of people, many of them sitting in the room tonight, who are integrally involved in making all of this happen. So thank you to all of you and all of the staff who are involved in accomplishing all of these goals over the course of the year. Would that all end my report?
Thanks, Chris. You, you waited till your sixth goal to mention COVID, and one of the things the board talked about at your mid-year evaluation was that that didn't really show up in this operational plan, but it's been a big part of the work as an undercurrent. Could you speak to that briefly as we head into a closed session in about 20 minutes to review you? Because that's been a piece of the work this year that wasn't explicit and will be adopted, but it's certainly been ever-present in your buildings and with your team.
Yeah, I think that's right. I think when, the, the feeling that's really truly different this year from the last few is that during the pandemic, we were incredibly reactionary. We were forced into decisions at last minute with often not all of the information we wanted or needed, and, and that really created conditions of stress. An outcome of that is that, as, as you've watched and watched your personnel reports, we've had, we've lost a lot of folks, finding subs, finding teachers, creating people that come back and, and are here working and, and giving that, that passion that they, they brought to the education profession, just trying to recapture that. And, and we don't talk a lot about that. You're right, Jonathan, we don't, you know, talk about how things are going and the difficulties maybe it is in, in finding subs, but I don't think you have to look far. We've talked about this with 916 and their challenges in terms of, of staffing and finding folks, but we've really seen our staff come back, work hard, and, and we're really putting pieces together that we feel have allowed us to create the conditions to return to an, just an excellent school district and excellent educational program, co-curricular program for, for our students at all levels. So just pleased with that. We haven't talked about it a lot, but you're right, it is, it has been an undercurrent of the work we've done in order to accomplish these goals.
Appreciate the update. As I mentioned, we do go into closed session after this meeting to review you against these goals, so it's helpful to have your perspective and for the community here. Really good progress made to date, and at our next meeting, we'll have a chance to share with you what we came up with.
Great, thank you.
Excellent. We'll move to 6.1, updates. We'll start with AMSD Legislative. Mr. DeMay, you gave us a little preview during our budget conversation. We got out on time.
Oh, wow. It was quite a session. If you couldn't find something you liked or something you didn't like, you really haven't been looking hard. So it's a lot of focus on education, but a lot of things done. Interestingly enough, on the formula, this year it's going to be increased 4%, so it's going to be up to $7,148 per pupil. That's going up 2% in '25, but that's a floor. They're adding inflation in. It's basically 24, 25, 20, or 25, 26, 27, they're going up 2%, but those are floors. Those aren't where they could go with inflation. Special ed funding through FY '24 through '26 is up, the state's taking 44. Those aren't where they could go with inflation. Special ed funding through FY '24 through '26 is up. The state's taking 44% of it, which is a substantial increase than what they had. And then in '27, they're going to 50%. They've added a lot of voluntary pre-K seats, going up to 70. I think they're adding about over 3,000 next year to 7160 and then 10,160 permanent seats. And then '26, '27 up to 1,200, or 12,360 permanent seats. They're funded at .6 ADM. As Bernice mentioned, we have a free lunch program now. We will have compensatory revenue. We don't know exactly how that'll work, but the Department of Education met with some of us last week and told us things would be forthcoming. We have some, you know, much like that. Sandra, we are the first in the nation to pass summer unemployment for our paras, our bus drivers, our food service staff. It is funded by the state at $135 million between FY '24 to FY '27 until depletion. I think as of last Friday, you could actually apply for unemployment. And there are no, we have really no sense of what's going down except we will get paid at the end of the year. That's what we've been told. So I suspect in a lot of these things where we're looking at cash flow and things like that, I think we're going to see the money later than sooner, but the money, the good news is the money is there. So always good to have a little reserve, little reserves around. So that's great. Just some other things that we've been working on forever. The levy renewal automatically. They are giving school districts a one, in the next 10 years, a one-shot to renew without going to the voters, that the school board will have to, by roll-call vote, approve an extension of a levy. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff in the budget this year and a lot of, a lot of different things moving around and a lot of things that passed quite late that I think we were a little surprised that they're implementing right away, but, you know, we'll deal with it. So that's what's going on. As I said, AMSD last Friday, we got to meet with Department of Education and, you know, they understand some of our frustrations with, you know, how do we plan, how do we do this, how do we do that? But, you know, we're all moving forward, so.
Thank you for the update. Just take a moment to acknowledge Jim's work on this. And we talked about, you know, the work of the Board and above and beyond showing up visibility and the updates and connectivity to this work. I think everybody who lives in the capital environment would argue this was one of the fastest and furious years we've seen. And Jim was right there every step of the way. So kind of all other duties as assigned, way to go, buddy. Appreciate it. Good work.
It was interesting being there, so.
Sandra, Northeast Metro 916, tough act to follow with Jim and the legislative update.
Yeah. Well, similarly, you know, 916 also, the legislative, you know, update that we got for 916 Board came in on Friday and there's just, you know, so much to it. And we don't really have the full, you know, understanding of how that's going to impact 916. And we'll be reviewing that at the August Board Session. But one thing, you know, one thing to point out as it relates to legislative funding, there was, you know, a $14 million mental health grant for the schools, mental health in the schools. The language was silent on kind of the specifics as to how that is going to be used or allocated. So one thing I know, the intermediate school districts are going to be, you know, advocating to Department of Health that the intermediates have some role in using that funding. So that's important for the mental health classrooms that the intermediates have. So the last time 916 met was early, was May 3rd. So we didn't have our main meeting, so our early May meeting anyway. So just a couple of things, you know, just like our schools, they're going through their graduation ceremonies right now. So there's a graduation tomorrow night at Wells, Thursday night at Cora, Friday at the ALC at Cora. So a lot of, you know, graduation ceremonies going out with 916. So that's pretty, pretty fun. First reading of the budget. So with the budget, you know, it wasn't adopted, but kind of a preliminary, like Bernice did for us today, kind of a preliminary look at how things are looking before the legislative session was over and before we kind of know what things look like. But just a couple of highlights I wanted to share. You know, as you know, 916 is largely, like us, a lot of personnel costs, right? Salaries and benefits for staff. And in order to, you know, we had some contract negotiations that, that impacted some of the budgets. And I know that the, our finance, the 916 Finance Director's been meeting, I believe, with, with the member finance directors or communicating at least on some of the budget issues for, you know, as we're a member of 916, we pay membership fees and we pay tuition. And it looks like, you know, the membership fees will be increasing preliminarily, 2.2%. The career technical center tuition rate's increasing 4.6% and care and treatment 1.9%. So that's the preliminary budget. And it looks like there's been, you know, there's been some conversations. Hopefully that's not all a surprise to Bernice. Those conversations, I believe, have been held with the finance directors of each district. But again, preliminary, I just thought it's, you know, to share this with this Board is important as well. But that's going to be kind of, you know, the revenue that's going to be needed to continue to provide the services that we need from 916. And I think we're in the process of, you know, some strategic planning with 916 and really engaging the Board in that process a little bit more robustly than has been happening previously. So I'm looking forward to that. And I think that's it for 916.
Great. Good updates on both fronts. I think as we head into budgeting for both entities, what I'm hearing from both of you is a little bit of patience, particularly with our finance folks, a little bit of what will we know and when. I think the net-net is it was a good year for education at the state from a funding standpoint, but it may create a little bit of heartburn, particularly for those of us around this Board Table who are used to seeing budgets in one form. And we may need to exercise that patience over the course of the next nine to 12 months as we adapt to changing funding streams and cash that may show up later than typically anticipated. But good updates all around. Moving on to 7.1, School Board Member Reports. Does anybody have anything to report?
I, I have been, as I think many in this room and many watching, just at so many events. April and May are crazy and I no longer have any kids in our Mounds View schools. I have three grads. And, but it's a great opportunity to get out and see what's going on in our schools. So Diane and I were able to go to the District Art, and Jim was there too, the District Art Festival opening night. And that is so fun to see all of our artists, from our youngest artists across the district to our older ones and to see all the work that our art educators do across the district. Irondale had a fabulous spring play, also recognized by the Hennepin Theater Trust. And so they get, they get to attend the Spotlight Showcase as well as Mounds View's musical and Irondale's musical from the fall. All had outstanding awards from Hennepin Theater Trust, which is great. Been able to go to lots of different athletic events. And I just am amazed at all the parents out there who are keeping it all together with all that's on their calendars this month, so.
Yeah. Other updates?
Yeah, you just have to head to the fields. One day I caught girls lacrosse, track and field, and baseball all in one day. Friday night, I got to see some ultimate frisbee, which was great. But what I'd really like to comment on is that I had the privilege of attending both the Mounds View and Irondale Scholarship Nights. And I think unfortunately, if you watch a lot of TV or TV news or read a lot in the media, you hear a lot about kids that aren't maybe doing some great things. I got to see just tons of kids doing great things and are going to have great futures. And it just made me so happy. I also got to go to the CLT graduation last week, which was very rewarding, very committed families, very committed staff. It was just a wonderful event, so.
Very cool. Other updates? Sandra?
You know, I almost hate, I hate to do this because when you call out one, you leave others out. But I am going to do it. As I look through some of the personnel changes today, I just wanted to call out the retirement of Mr. Cartwright at Mounds View High School. He's, I don't know how many years it's been, but he has been a really amazing, you know, science teacher and just a leader within that building. And I know he's made a lot of really important connections with kids that aren't even his students. So I just wanted to call that out as I look at the retirement list in our package today. So thank you, Mr. Cartwright, for your service to Mounds View Schools and our students.
Other Board Reports?
I'm very excited to be joining our Irondale grads this coming Monday and of course their families at the graduation ceremony. So very excited to participate that in that great tradition with, with Irondale. So I look forward to seeing the students and their families on Monday.
With that, there is a lot that happens between now and our next Board Meeting. We've had some of our graduation commencement ceremonies already at some of our buildings. Irondale and Mounds View will occur next week. So hundreds of students will walk across that stage and celebrate with their families. And then lots of graduations up into middle school. We've got our Last Turtle Laker moving on, getting clapped out next Thursday. Bring the tissues, I'm told. It's a moment, but just want to acknowledge all of our families that are reaching milestones and moving, moving up and on in our system. It's an exciting time for folks. And then I want to acknowledge, because we've got an end-of-the-school-year day coming, our custodial staff, who, if I recall, are going to be cleaning up a lot of papers because that seemed to be a thing. I think we forget sometimes about not just the hard work they do over the summer to prep our buildings, but like the, the good work that they do as these kids exit the building in celebration, but in those moments. So just really appreciate all of our educators, our staff, our team. Hope they enjoy these final days of the year. They've done good work and we look forward to, hopefully they get a little bit of time off. We know they'll do some of their, their teacher learning and summer workshop work. But it's an exciting time for, for all of our families. And to Heidi's point, hold on tight, it is exhausting. And all the grad parties and all the things, so. Hopefully everybody's enjoying that as we begin the summer. With that, is there anything else to come before the Board? We are adjourned.